Thanks for the yummy sourdough.
Good.
Okay, there you go. Okay, let's call the meeting to order. We welcome everybody on this beautiful spring day. It was nice to have a field today. It was sunny yesterday. It was raining, snowing. Yeah, it was crazy. So we started off with comments and a public. So why don't we go right into approval of minutes of figures? Twenty.
I'll move to it first. Okay, so second. What was the favorite?
Just it. Well, I was like just thinking about the dates, like that seemed. I was gonna go back and look at my calendar because I didn't think that was the date of that meeting.
Is that right?
So. Cause that. I was gonna go back to look at that because I wasn't.
I think the meeting on that date. I believe twenty. I think she's one meeting.
I did actually look at that same thing. I was like, is that, did I, was I at that meeting? And then I looked at the date and I also had it.
And I won't see if we have approved the date.
Yeah. I thought we did at the last meeting. That's why I was looking at that meeting date.
And wasn't only from this half. We did the thirteenth or whatever.
The last.
For that one. So I think it's all straight, just a week behind.
But I wasn't at that meeting. That's what I was then double checking.
Okay, weren't at the twentieth?
No.
So is that something we.
So she just needs to remove your maybe.
Yeah. I don't know what's. That's why I was like checking to see, and then I was like looking to see what else was on that agenda, because I was like mixing that with, and I thought we had approved the meeting minutes of that.
Well, that's a good catch.
At that meeting. So, and I think it's, this is, these are the minutes of the twenty-seventh, I do believe.
When was the twenty-seventh? So.
Yes, no. So there is some. So.
The dates are a little.
Because we did approve that meeting and. The reason I know is because that was the meeting, the meeting on the twentieth was the meeting that you all were talking about me and alleging that I was talking to council members about this group, which I have not yet confirmed that I was, whatever it was that I was saying. And so I had remembered that that was the meeting of the twentieth.
No, that I'm sure that was the thirteenth. The third, I think.
Well, I wasn't.
And just any of that. No, the thirteenth was the meeting where there was discussion that you're referred to.
But neither you or I were not at that meeting.
I was.
I was not at that meeting.
I was at the, yeah. Oh, I was not. I was out of town and I remember specifically being on the call, on the phone in a hotel room on the thirteenth.
Yeah, so I think.
And those were the last back end. Those were.
Okay. Those were literally that. We were absent for that meeting.
I know, I wasn't there.
I was not there, but this meeting, we, I was here. I don't know if you were, but the twentieth.
I didn't think I was here. I think you were because we had, this is like the treasurer's report and you've had some comments about that.
About the treasurer's report?
About the treasurer's report, yeah.
Okay. Cause I thought we had that meeting. No. I thought it was that meeting. There was no meeting the twenty-seventh because we had our retreat.
Okay.
So I know.
I.
Meeting behind that. Okay.
Okay. Yeah, that's right.
Okay. So the other one was just like the dated right?
They are correct, the dates.
They are dated correctly. It's just that they're out of sequence in terms of when they're coming up. So we have approved the minutes for February twentieth. And so as we can tell, they are approved. Everybody was here.
Yeah.
Well, these are.
That's for the words.
Yes. Which we just approved.
Yes.
Yes, agreed.
Okay. So I was there.
Yeah. Yeah, we were both, I think everybody was here for this.
Yeah, they.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I was just looking at the date and I was thinking, I didn't think I was here. Okay.
It was the thirteenth, you and I were both absent.
Okay.
Okay, well, that was fun.
That was fun.
Good times, good times.
Collectively, we have.
But we're still behind on minutes. Just one week. One, two.
Well, I think we're out of sequence on the minutes. Cause you guys approved the thirteenth.
And the retreat.
And the retreat.
But none of these, that's why.
So I think they were just somehow back out of sequence. Probably because we didn't have a meeting to have a retreat. So the meeting before the three, the twentieth, the fifteenth, you know, that's minutes.
Yeah, that's. Okay.
But I think it's probably out there.
I still approve these minutes.
Okay, so now finance policy review. Before we dive into this, I wanted to just see a couple of things to remind us about our discussion about policies that came in December. Remember we did the great big. The great big, here's all policies that are coming next year. And we talked about how to tackle them. And we put in the catabolism. We also talked about the fact that some of the policies were public facing, patron facing, staff was responsible for bringing those forward to us in our first trustee approval. And then there were a set of policies that had to do with how the board handles itself. And those were things that the governance committee did. And then we said, in some of these policies, there's going to be some really more administrative procedures more than policies. And at that time, I'm sure Sylvia and I talked about it, we thought some of these financial policies make progress following today. Personally, I think some of what is in some of these policies, especially the purchasing and the P card policy, are more procedures than policies. And I would suggest that we look at those with the idea that we have to be reviewing appropriately, pull the procedures out and delegate those to the director to make changes on procedures in the future. We can talk about that. Just to keep it true. So I think the board's focus is basically what happens from the director above and what happens below that in its procedure. So for example, who signs, whether the department can signs for, for experience, I think is direct. So why don't you think about that as we go through this, just to sort of simplify it.
So Jenny, just to, what you said was anything you feel, anything that's director and above would be a policy, director and below is a procedure?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
And at least sort of the normal changes, you know, you might create a little bit of this big substantive change, it brings it back to the board. But just the normal things, you can imagine that the bank changes the way it handles the purchase cards, it doesn't need to come back to the trustees. And I flagged what I thought were procedures, which I can think of. And then I also mentioned more policy side, Doug sent us some comments, I made notes of those in the fact that it's a mixture of these. So that.
Can I just ask a question?
Yes.
Since often others reference to other districts' policies and procedures, did you look at those to help shape anything that you're talking about now? As it relates to looking at distinctions between policies and procedure? Did you see that in any?
You did. And we saw that the districts were inconsistent. So when Soviet had made the first purchase policy, so this is our current adopted purchase policy. This authorization is a signature's policy. We took this one by the fall of this.
I want to say that last time.
Yeah. Hey, Kim.
Hi.
Kim.
Everything's good.
Well, hey.
Of course.
Free weapon, right? Oh, it was different. So we looked at the Garfield County line that is the one Jennifer used. And at that time, we thought that was too much to believe. And moved away from it because that was the one that could be a wide procedure for those.
Exactly. And my, my question for Jen, just kind of overriding, like kind of an overarching question is. I'm assuming that what you have is what's written down is like what you guys would actually be doing. You're not like changing what you're doing to match what's written down.
No.
That imagines what you do.
The, the examples that Jenny hit, that we changed it to what we do.
Okay, that's, that's.
Yep.
Yeah. I don't, I don't want you to put stuff down that.
I didn't do that with the investment policy, cause I couldn't, couldn't.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was like.
Yeah, that's a whole other.
Mind going.
That's a whole other issue.
And I think when the audit is just the review, people will be worried policies and procedures. So if there's any issues, not our procedures, they will come up in the plan. Last we had the county, we have the P card policy, it's, it's the cities that is just relevant to us. And I asked me out of county and I'm not sure if that exists anymore. If they may do. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. So Ms. Jen, did you have anything to do with T is up?
No, really. It's that these are the first six and then there'll be five more coming to hopefully on the sixteenth. Four, because I don't remember what these are, the investment policy. So yeah, I just started with the ones that were easiest to draft or the ones that I felt like we needed to have in place sooner than later. Because we're going to be rolling out our finance system to all users probably in the next couple of weeks. And I want the purchasing and P card policies to be ready to have everybody review and sign. Off on.
You did give Kim's warm heads up and I just want to, to acknowledge students of you as just charming here. Also, a few particular things you think of over signature or. To get turned off. Policies, I'm assuming you would, you would go through everything now the first time and then they're open to. So I know nothing about this, it may turn up if this, or just to maybe interest in policies. I was hoping somebody else had more information about that.
I think it would be a policy.
So do you have any comments on this? Yeah.
Well, I, you know, I don't comment on that policy. I just maybe back to number two, which ones we looked at to compare, you know, Matt, it's since the Garfield County policies. But did we also look at other, you know, peer district's policies? I know that's a lot of work, so I'm not saying I had to, but I'm just curious.
Yeah, so Soviet and I, back in November, October, November, we were doing this, we did a fairly comprehensive book. Any policies we'd found, state like this, and this out. So we went through those and then we also found that we pulled those together into a big. Turn that over to staff to work from here. And so Jennifer, she got, I think also we linked it from the auditor, just to. We did try to.
And when I did use another one, I know we were so. So good. If I looked at more than Garfield County, I noted in the memo, the other ones. But primarily, these are mostly Garfield County and a couple of city of Overland.
Garfield County was by far the most detailed of any result. Most of them have much wider. And I don't know if that comes from your own experience, it's problems or.
They're, they're finance guys. They're.
Best meetings.
No. So. So asset management, it's good to go. Oh, those are the ones. So I'd say the territory, we just come up to do. Yeah, everybody always in.
Just in general, I couldn't, it's kind of like the mulligan part, I didn't hear you.
I just, I just had some wording changes.
Okay.
Okay, so the next one is the product policy. Question here that staff raised for us, you know, that this product policy refers to a product committee and they decided not to have a standard point committee. Doug suggested changing the language to product committee or other committee designated by the board. This context, what that committee does is manage the process to review and hire the auditor if you're doing it. So it's not. A product committee, which is a committee that sits with the auditor, that evaluates proposals and then make recommendations.
We had, I, I was just trying to find my notes about this. I feel like we had a conversation when we first brought on Matt McMahon, with, in, in which he said that part of his process actually to interview each, or any, any board member who wants to be interviewed. And so we didn't necessarily see a need to like create a committee because we would all be talking to this human or to this firm. So I don't feel, unless you all want to create more work for yourselves going forward, maybe we don't need an audit. I mean, the board can create the, I don't know.
That's after.
Yeah.
We select an auditor. This is the process for selecting.
But like, okay, do you think, do you think that, what's your recommendation?
I just want the policy.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I want, I just wonder if we.
Well, I think the trustees have to.
Yeah.
I think they all.
Yeah, and I, when I was looking at this, I was actually thinking that rather than even having the beginning of that sentence, that I was thinking it would just read the district board of trustees working with the library director or their designee will initiate a formal request. So that way we don't even get into like, like who that would be. And we can still create a, a subcommittee if we wish to, but we're responsible for that. So I don't know, that was kind of how I, I thought about it.
And so we're looking at page twelve, going through responsibilities, number eight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a good, I think that's a good suggestion.
And in that sentence, we don't have an executive library director, so we obviously would get rid of the word executive. And do we often say the library director or their designee?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Cool.
And that, that executive shows up.
In all of them.
Yeah. Yeah. So, yeah.
That was one universal.
And then just taking that change, who would obviously make corrections for the following paragraphs where references the committee to the board? Just the board.
Do, does it need to say like we will create an add-on subcommittee to evaluate the or if the proposals or something like that?
Well, no, we're saying we could do that, but we're not.
You don't have to.
We're getting to that level of this now.
Okay.
It's on us.
Okay.
At this point. And I mean, this is not to say that we won't eventually create another committee. It's not about that. It's just simply about keeping this kind of a little bit.
Yeah.
Street.
Bigger.
Yeah.
Remember the wild one, a lot of them to create.
This is only about the selection of the. An auditor. And not. Functional element of an audit.
So are those changes acceptable to the budget? Remember, these will come back to us for whoever wants to find a way to, so right now we just go to step. Kim, do you have anything that?
Okay, just David, mine was just that executive.
Okay.
And I just had one further question on D. So it has the finance manager is responsible, all of that. So is that who is coordinating all of that as the finance manager? Okay.
Rocks. Rocks.
Turn now checks and new questions.
Yeah, please do, please do. Please do.
Okay. Yeah, your budget.
I like the timeline.
Yes, no, it's nice.
Yeah.
I just have two things. Sorry. Okay, so a number four, appropriation of funds and adoption of budget. In the last sentence, so are we only giving our budget to the Boulder County Board of County Commissioners? Do we give our budget to the city too?
I think yes, these are quotes.
Okay, cause I mean, this just says Boulder County.
The financial report. I got maybe a question. So maybe I should get that checked. The financial report, so in July, there's a report. We have to propose to the county.
Okay.
And the city. But we don't recall the IGA, the trustee.
But you need the budget.
This is a statutory.
Yeah, yeah.
So maybe double check.
Okay.
Yeah. So does a financial report need to be mentioned somewhere? I don't see, so it's a statutory report, I don't know, but it's an annual report of your finances. It's a, it's just basically a big annual report you do that says, here's how much money you get a piece of, and did you, it's your normal annual report. Sure.
Yeah, and then on the second page in the, in the, the timeline calendar. So on the previous page, this, this section would just be talking about the delivery. What does it say? Deliver the annual budget. I mean, so I'm assuming that's encompassed in what is in December fifteenth, but I mean, it doesn't actually have, it doesn't actually say that. So I just. Okay. Okay. Okay, yeah, cause I've been, I think we need to go back then again to the, those sentences we were looking at before, because this says we're required to deliver the budget by December fifteenth. It's the cert.
Yeah, it should probably say certify them.
Yeah, that, that makes more sense. So we need to strike the last sentence in four. So we don't need to deliver the budget to the body. That, that sounds like the simplest.
Yeah.
Well, just that there is a annual budget message that is to be presented, right?
That's what we just.
Yeah, but.
That, that goes to this, to division of local governments at the end of January.
It's, yeah, it's a second.
But to taxpayers and library patrons. Which is different from the board and.
So they're different forms, so the statute requires every year, the library just begins an annual review in July to the county and the city. And I can't remember exactly what it says. It's basically, so the library always doesn't need a report, and here's the programs and there's the, the services. And that's what is in front of you. Do you think that should be added into this charge? It's not a budget thing.
She was asking about the budget message.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's what I'm asking about. That's what I.
Second item on the.
On this. Yeah, so I don't think we were referencing something.
Okay.
Yeah, no, it, this, the number two, because it says January fifteenth through twentieth, annual library budget message. It just seems like if that is what it is, if this is, if this should tie to maybe the annual meeting, which I think is. A strong or a, whatever our end meeting is.
The budget message is, that's a term of art and it's actually attached to your budget. It's a very simple, usually word page, sometimes one of the, but it just needs to say, follow the budget process attached to your budget. Here's the one. That's the statutory refer.
So it's not like a press release? It's just, it's like.
Yeah, in theory.
Taxpayers and library patrons.
Yeah, in theory, it goes to DOLA. They put it on their website and anybody can go look at it. But of course, it might be.
So should this be reworded to clarify that where it's a message to DOLA? That's available.
That sounds clearer than this here. Cause this does sound like we have to issue like a press release.
Yeah. To really sequence since our.
Right. Mm-hmm.
Few months before.
Right. But I just wondered if that is tied to, you know, an annual meeting cycle or something that then gets presented as a part of the.
It's a statutory.
Yeah. Can we just strike the second item on the timeline then? Because it's mentioned.
Yeah. Instead of encapsulating into what's there to do.
Yeah.
What if this, what if this calendar come from? It just said, it was in the back of, to whatever policy was in the spreadsheet.
Company, the Department of Revenue.
Yeah.
The only part I like about that second line, it just speaks to being transparent to the taxpayers and the patrons. So I like that, even though it may not fit with what is legally required.
But I wonder if it. Like maybe fits with when we approve a budget or something.
Yeah, which would be like in November.
Yeah. Yeah, because it's already been approved and so like by early January, people would. How did that particular date get set in this calendar?
It's just.
Well, it was, yeah.
It was like already, it was already in there.
When you, when you get a copy of the budget at the beginning of October, you post a notice in the newspaper that it's available to the public at the main library or wherever, and maybe for a term of date. So the proposed budget gets published in that sense and it's available for everyone.
Maybe, maybe that's the addition and you strike that second one, which is confusing because it's just a statutory, like add to, but it is perfect, add the. Yeah, budget, what's submitted to the board for approval at the end of October, whatever.
Yeah.
And to you neighbors.
Yeah.
You know, public made aware of. Yeah, public made aware of, blah, blah, blah.
So right now, early November.
Yeah.
Board holds a public hearing of one time's notice and newspaper is not available in copies of the draft as it is for the public.
Yeah. Yeah, maybe we pull that out separately to Sam's point, to just be like, hey, we're announcing this is happening.
Right.
And then there's a hearing, which is a separate item. And then there's.
And then it's done.
And then get rid of that September fifteenth to twentieth.
So there is a January fifteenth.
Yeah.
Fine. So, so how would you suggest changing what it says?
Well, we could add it to the October fifteenth. Final graph, but delivered the board of trustees, copies made available.
And notice of public, notice that the budget is public or something. But when it's approved though, when people would know. Yes, that there's this public hearing related to it, but then there's like an adopted budget to be published, right? Like there should be some sharing of, this will be the budget of the year twenty twenty-five. I think that's the January. Well, we would eliminate the January one, but to have it at the end of the year.
Yeah, it could come under the fifteenth.
Of December.
Same thing we say.
Yeah.
Yeah. Same thing as we said in October fifteenth, but it's the final.
Yeah. Yes.
Approval of the budget.
Do not in the act today, there are no requirements to give the budget to the county. Just this March.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Something.
So, so as I understand, October fifteenth, we're adding the language that is currently in January fifteenth. So I would just.
No, just like, and publish, like, delivery of final budget and noted, public notice.
Is not fine.
Yes, okay. Final draft of, sorry, I didn't say the word draft. Delivery final budget, draft budget and public notice, blah, 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 in that line. And then another line that says, you know, note, note, I don't know if it's on our website or press release at the end of December, mid-December, when the budget is approved, notice to public that budget is approved. I think those are the proposals. And then strike the January fifteenth, twentieth. That's hard.
So can we take the second sentence of early November and move back into October fifteenth? So we're not seeing this in three and twice.[1775.76] So can we take the second sentence of early November and move it into October fifteenth, so we can see this in three and twice?
Yes.
Anything else?
Yeah. All right. While we're talking about lease right now, again, we do lease copiers and printers. And so I wondered why this was in there.
Yeah, I may note that this. Concept of lease purchase agreements and supervisory participations. And then I think what I did was change C, to say sale slash leaseback.
Instead of certificate of participation.
And then D, I just have some, some comments about annual terminations instead of. I would just change those to annual termination. So the lease purchase agreements you're talking about here are annual things for copiers. The certificates of participation are the kinds of lease purchases we've been talking about for builders and stuff like that. Yeah. And so change that to sale slash leaseback.
So the certificates of participation, an alternative to the mortgage, to try and. And D is going to the kinds of things we do for copiers.
So we're going to need a thought of the people.
They do, if they extend beyond a year. But that's why you have that phrase, I think, funding out. Which I think you'll have to use to end the termination. So it's a.
Why does someone understand?
I had a comment in three, two, the third line from the bottom, the sentence that starts debt is issued only. Exhausting all resources such as grants and pay, girlfriending. I would just strike that, because the kind of debt you're able to engage in is sometimes way more beneficial than you think that.
Okay. First, the minor, we doubt suggests a number D to D, but instead of not knowing, we didn't say less than.
Could someone remind me what the threshold is for David to enter into contracts before we are allowed, before he has to come to us? Thirty K, should that be consistent?
I have the same question.
Yeah.
Because this feels like, this is going to confuse everybody.
Yeah, it's like.
Which things are ten, which things are thirty, yeah.
Can we make those numbers?
I think, as I wrote this, it raises his number fifty.
Change that.
It's actually a hundred thousand.
It's a hundred, yeah, yeah. So it's like, all the sorts of numbers.
And, and so some of these procedures, it seems to me it's a mix of. Things that are procedural, but really not us, and policy. I don't know if this is really the version we need to be in.
Because this is a purchasing procedure.
Right, exactly. But the next one, the basis for purchasing, makes sense to me, it's a trustee thing.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's. Does David have a comment?
Yeah, David, do you?
Read his lips.
No, I don't have a comment.
So it seems like, so if I'm looking at these, it seems to be like A, B, C, and D are procedures. Me, the finance manager, should be the central purchasing agency, or that might be a trustee thing. And F, long clearly shall incur an expensive debt, and that might be a trustee thing. And possibly G, since that speaks to the basis in which we are making decisions. So we would then keep in E, F, G, and pull out C through D.
It's like, follow the policy. Would you like the procedures to follow the policy, like?
I think the procedures are moved how to meet your daily book.
Okay.
And the basis for purchasing, and that seems to be very hard. One thing that I thought was missing from here, work for the feds, I'm not sure what they're doing so well. Is we have preference for state and local purchases, do we want to try to do a different. To have a preference for disadvantaged folks, small businesses, et cetera. And then we said that, you know, we've talked about it, and that's part of how we do it, and we said that in the feds, you know, it became a big game. And some of it just became a small man for some big corporation. But I wanted to raise that, so you guys could talk about that. And show we were trying to raise the profile of.
I wrote, I wrote something down like that, can, can we have a clause that just says best effort at sourcing diverse suppliers or something? Like, make, make our best effort, I, I feel like it's just a. A nod to the fact that we do actually do that, and it doesn't restrict us to quotas or things that are more controversial or restrictive.
I like that word.
Yeah, I. Yeah, is there some language in? And I wondered about just flipping words and a preference for local first over state.
Penitent purchases, I think, is a trustee from. Staff had a question here, Doug had suggested that under one. Where it says members of the board of trustees or their spouses, we had a, or unmarried partners.
Sorry, I have a question about that. Is that like? Defined? Which, like, the unmarried partners, like. To me, like, how do you define, like, how long would somebody have to have been dating for them to be considered an unmarried partner? Like spouses, or like spouse or, or like live-in partner?
Right, like.
I mean, I'm just, I don't know, I mean. I just, I don't know how, how, I just feel like this could get real waffly. Did you use a term of?
Or could be family members, right? It doesn't have to be spouses, right?
Yeah, it could be family members, and also could be business.
Well, that's in there already, right? Children, parents, grandparents, grandchildren, brothers, sisters.
Oh, yeah.
Isn't that also in there?
Firms or enterprises in which they have.
Employees, yeah. But yeah, I, I mean, I, I think it's fair to be like, you know, unmarried partners, it's fair, like, if you're living with someone or whatever, but I, I don't, just, it's, how do we define that?
Does, does it have, I mean, does it change at all if we just said spouses or partners? Man, I don't know, I mean, does that?
It's just, that's not, that doesn't, like, spouse has like a legal meaning, right? Like, partners doesn't.
Legal family. I don't know, are you lawyer? Can you say that?
No, it is, but I, I think his point was to capture somebody who's not unmarried partner. But he's a partner, but that's why I'm like, do we limit it to somebody that lives with you, or, I don't know, I just.
Like, because what if they're just roommates? I don't know.
Well, right, that's the thing, like. And like, do we want to, I, I don't know. I don't know, I don't, I don't want to, like, belabor this, I just don't know how to. I don't know, to hit the point without.
I hear you.
Making it potentially fuzzy.
Plus one.
But why don't we try to just to frame it more as someone with whom they share a financial interest?
I mean, you could say it more like, yeah, a significant other with, share financial interests or something.
So, I mean, we could be three. Looking at three spouses, children, parents, grandchildren. The spouses, so what we're dealing between the trustee, shares, and financial interest.
Or could you, how could we sort of leverage or utilize the conflict of interest statement? Like, you know, sort of use that as a reference. Someone has been disclosed.
So any person that a trustee has identified as a, on the conflict floor, and is having a financial interest.
Yeah.
And then, Jen, you had some questions about some exemptions to use, because there are some times when you guys are using people for programs, so can you speak to that?
Yeah, so in the Garfield County policy, prohibited purchases. But we currently use employees to provide services that are outside the scope of their positions, so they might have a special talent that we want them to teach. And we have, we have developed a salary structure that would accommodate them to get a different rate of pay for any kind of services they perform in that regard. So it's teaching classes, it's providing language translation, that sort of thing. And so we'd like that exception to be made.
So could that be something like to, you will not purchase from employees except as reflected in adopted library employment policies?
And then the other question was, we have, in the past, occasionally hired. Spouses or significant others. To perform the same kind of thing. And in most cases, we have hired them as independent contractors, and they're typically to perform one or more workshops or kind of. Teaching sessions or, you know, musical presentations, that sort of thing. And they range in cost between anywhere from like, I don't know what I said, a hundred dollars to five thousand dollars, depending on what it is they're doing and how many sessions they're doing it for. And it doesn't happen often, and it doesn't happen that we use the same person over and over again.
Certain example, Jennifer, just because I'm not clear.
Yeah, so like, we've hired. One of our library specialists, that. A few years ago, we hired her and her partner to play music at one of our parties. But we've also hired that same person to present musical programming to children during summer reading.
So could that be, if people are comfortable with that, could that be handled with the same kind of language? Compliments or responses, except as reflected in adopted policies and procedures regarding employment. Okay, so the next one is D two.
I thought that you would strike everything after they come. Up to additional cost.
Okay.
The additional cost to the district is very.
Yeah, yeah, great, yeah.
Let me save a bunch of words.
I read that over and over again.
There's a wrong word to that. Yeah. Afford itself of the subject of a contract.
Yeah.
It's like a bad translation.
Where, where do I start? Where do I start to be?
I think it's, yes, additional costs.
Okay, okay.
And then we remove number three, because we took care of that.
Okay.
So we, again, comparison pricing one procedure. And Doug mentions that this has been in terms of the eternal reference, but if you're pulling here, that doesn't matter.
Okay, I wasn't sure what it meant by that.
It's, it's referencing something else in this policy that's the wrong reference.
Okay, got it.
But if you pull there, it was a procedure. Three, F is also a procedure, if you remember.
Yeah.
G, competitive bids, so we need to follow as trustee.
And all of these were a reference to a bid selection. If it's the most responsible. Or most responsible figure, that's another legal term.
It is. Responsible and responsible, yes. Yeah.
Or inseparable.
Yeah. Both of those, responsive and responsible?
Well, mostly responsible, or responsive is like, did they give you everything that you asked for? Obviously, I've lived too much in the construction industry, but that's usually, did they give you everything you're supposed to? In that fifty-page instructions to bidders. Yeah.
But isn't it required, like, we're using, you know, public taxpayer dollars, and so, isn't there a requirement that their competitive bids, that our bidding is competitive?
Over, over a certain amount, yeah, over, over.
Yeah.
But we're, but we have fifteen, yeah.
You know, but. And then it's probably, so this fifty thousand isn't the threshold?
I mean, but again, we could try it out, if we're, if we're comfortable with it, you know, if we're not happy to approve things, like, all the time, then I think that.
Yeah, this says, we do the competitive bids, and David approves for fifty thousand dollars. And then for a hundred thousand plus.
Yep.
I thought G five and seven were kind of, were redundant. One of them says the library director shall analyze the acceptable bid and recommend the one who submitted the lowest and best, and then seven says purchases should be made from the bidder. Who is most advantageous to the district, considering price, quality, et cetera. Like, I actually don't think lowest and best should be the only, I don't know, it's a little vague, so maybe just one of those.
Should we just say who has submitted the most, the, that is most advantageous to the district, considering price?
Yeah, yeah, it's a more detail.
So does that mean you still have five?
So, keep five, but we take, we strike half of five, and we strike the half, the first half of seven, and they just become one. Seven and they just become one.
So five is executive library director, where the authorized designation should analyze the acceptable bids received period.
I know. Received and recommend the vendor and then we go to the language and whose bid is most advantageous.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So then we're starting in those seven.
Yes.
And the ones incoming.
Right, yes, yep, we're just.
Finding that.
I had a question on six. Because. Do we need to clarify that? Director is authorized to spend dollars on items that are approved in the budget. That's a distinction on the current policy makes that we have approved within the budget. You know, he's spending X amount on staff or X amount on books or whatever, that doesn't come back to us. So these are, I think. Purchases. That are probably what I'm confused over. Do we need to add? Tend to be in the context of competitive bids? Versus all budget decisions?
You're saying you wanna clarify that this doesn't apply to like things that were already. Heard in the budget?
Yeah.
I mean, that makes sense to me.
And the language we used in the current policy is the library director has no spending limitations for all budgeted normal recurring operating. Expenditures except as noted below and then we have like. Um budgeted normal recurring expenditures included and then have a list. So.
This, and this one comes farther than.
Yeah. H. Would we just pump that out?
So. Or, or whether if we took final decision to purchase items or services of more than a hundred thousand should be made by the board of trustees and we put that at the end of the introductory paragraph of G. So right now it says purchases. Fifty thousand does the competitive bids. Is made by the board of trustees. And we do that through the budget.
I'm a little confused. So, okay, for example, we cite, you don't like the security contract, we wanna bit that out. Are we then saying, well, since we already approved the security line, go for it, David, without bringing it back to us? I don't think that's what we're saying. But it seems like maybe that.
So what constitutes approved in the budget?
Yeah.
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 It still should be a competitive process.
Yeah.
Well, for certain things, but I mean, the budget includes things that are not competitive as well as competitive, so we certainly need to clarify. And maybe it already is, it's just.
It's all competitive except for the exceptions in H.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, yeah, I mean, this, this section, this section's only meant to be about.
So maybe it's okay.
So I don't know that it feels like broader availability.
Yeah, so I'm just glad that nobody's confused over that. And so the table um is something I think we should pull out because I do want to get a director. Stuff. That's procedure. And we don't suggest an H, but we also include services that we purchase from border city from county as exceptions fifteen or competitive bids. We'll think about that.
What, what do we purchase from? City or county?
Well, I mean, Jen, I don't even have an opinion. Purchasing from, purchasing, purchasing.
I mean, it's kind of. It's it, it's like they didn't continue to happen in other forms or?
I mean, we don't have anybody to compete with. I mean, there's no competition. City or county. So wouldn't that be presented? Right?
Yeah, it's a simple source.
Yeah. Does it, is it covered in six?
Yep.
Yes. I thought we just referred to it all much generically, so.
And then you mentioned that to H two was a balance difference.
Was H a part of the policy?
I think H is part of the policy, yeah.
Yeah.
Because it's a competitive, it's a competitive bidding.
Yeah.
Seven.
Right. I think this encompasses those we have in the original policy.
I think so, yeah.
Jen, you're gonna do a find replace everywhere it says executive director and executive library director. It's driving me crazy that like they're getting in the same clause.
Yep.
It says executive library director and executive director, like in the same eye. It's driving me nuts.
I'm making a mistake.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're good with that one? So the purchasing current policy, I mean, personally, for me, I think it's still a pretty considerable procedure.
Yes.
Yep.
Plus one thousand.
And and then Doug had a question, whether employees use these or not. Yes, they do. Okay, so we have to make sure that's first when you do this as a procedure.
Um, I think it is, but we also have a travel policy coming along, sky procedure, but. Just all over that.
Yeah.
So any comments on this? Has we sent it to staff and don't see it again? How do they?
I have one question. Just might even. We have employee cards with access and account. There's a statement in here that when employee loses the card, they need to call the bank and cancel. Card. Does that freeze?
It freezes it, stops any further charges. Yeah. Uh, no, just the one card. And then um they usually issue us the bank card for the different.
And then, um, so I'm sorry, there was one of the things we've been. Purchasing, I think one thing myself included. But we, it wasn't included was who's someone is. We have um except for expenditures that are part of a signature president. President of boys and for a signature, but is that just restating something you have? It's all one way because I've been doing it on Sunday. Is there something you can take out of that? This is just. Yes, but I'm pretending to be able to do the dozen names of that signature. You're moving things.
Yes, I knew this clause for you.
Maybe if you could just take a look at that and see if that needs to be clarified too, because it's covered. That was the only thing that someone said. And then this comes back to us, yeah. And if you could draft a motion for us, that's a clear. So it's one of these coming up, so we think we got the motion for us to rescind or make. Just change the two, five, ten, three boxes go in.
So the purchasing policy is not procedure, but policy?
This is a, you tell me, yeah, we pulled some pieces out of it.
So I didn't hear, so just review again what pieces we're keeping, what are policy pieces?
No, this is not a paper, not a purchase card, so that needs to be.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
You know. No, then I can see, because I went back to the purchase policy, which is.
Okay.
We just pulled like a three.
Okay, alright.
Policy.
Okay. Alright.
Okay, cool. Um and as you guys go forward on this, um. As Jen, we're trying to share with you updated policy um. Schedule coming up. I think you may have similar things that come up in your team. Possibly records of maybe different. So as you go forward, these policies are just recommended, consider, excuse me, say, is this really a procedure? Is this really a policy, especially for using for the county?
Would you like me to make all these changes and bring them back to like the thirtieth? After we look at the next wave? Or we just set this around?
What was the question, Jen? Sorry.
Uh, would you like me to make the changes and then bring them back for the board later, like on the thirtieth of April?
Sure. I mean, I feel like they're approved, I, I mean, I approved them as, but I don't know if you want, everybody wants to see them again.
I think it would be good to have the changes, I mean, it has parties on the. Adoption of the net could be either the thirtieth or the sixteen.
Okay, well, sixteen is like just a new one, so.
Yeah, so the thirtieth, my, the sixteenth, whatever changes we have to do.
Would it be helpful to have the, the changes tracked so you could see what all made?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
Oh, these are great. All right. So governance, actually, the first part, I think, is Sam and Jen, um schedule reference evaluation to the executive director. Updating us on where you are with the evaluation portion.
Reminder to send those to us.
By Friday.
By Friday, the fifth. Uh, that's where we are with those. Okay, thank you to those who have sent them. And.
Yeah, we, we will, we're talking after the meeting to divide and conquer on the, you know. Atulation consolidation.
We'll submit to board president for review. For the.
So it can get into the packet for the sixteen.
For the sixteen, okay. Okay, so yes. Yes. The sixteenth, I think it's on the agenda from the sixteenth.
And is there a discussion, is a lot of the justice before that or? Or does it give discussion?
Well, that's, that's a question for the board.
Yeah.
Want to share that with, with the director?
Seems to me it would be appropriate to share with the director. Timing.
Be helpful for us to see. What's being shared with him. To instead of. See, editing these stories, but there's going to be. It's weird.
I don't know how to do that, though, being seen at the same time.
Was gonna come in the packet, so you typically would have a few days to look at it prior to the meeting. We were suggesting some of it.
No, before David, before David, the meeting with David.
No, just in advance, right, like, yeah. Not in advance of David seeing it, just in advance of meetings. No, yeah. I'm just trying to think about like the sequence, like if, you know.
Right, but so is, is having in the packet or not?
Yeah, I mean, I guess. What is the, the scope of your responsibility in, in, in meeting with David? Like. Like, you guys like took this on as. You know, like you're sharing the feedback and is it with the?
You know, as I understand, the scope of our responsibility is just to be the, the receiver of the forms and to. Collect and summarize that into something that could then be shared with the director and the board. Who does that sharing? Not determined and I didn't think that was in our scope. Kind of that was your.
No, I didn't. It's discussed.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, feedback, I think that the discussion should be, in my opinion, a group.
I would just want. You know, like a clear role fee, so it isn't just like this, you know. Like you have this need to like share this information and then it's like. You know, so like it's for you and it's for David, it's not weird or, you know. Yeah, this is a good question. Kim, do you have any guidance on this? Like, how do boards give library directors? Performance reviews or evaluations in general? Do they give them as a whole board? Does the president deliver the consolidated feedback? Like, what's the?
I have those.
Okay.
My favorite is one of them.
Okay.
And you can get in the executive session and then you can have a dialogue with the director. And that was kind of that, the one form where he's good and you. His, things that he's done, that's very.
So would the right sequence be Sam and I consolidate the information? Submitted to Johnny for review for inclusion in the board packet and then on, in the actual meeting is when we have the, with like the performance review where we give more color. Perhaps to the comments that we included. So wouldn't, there wouldn't be like a pre-performance review with just me and Sam and David, for example. But in the sharing, though, in the packet, like, is that? That should be confidential information, like that should be like.
Yeah, but it's a separate.
Yeah, okay.
Or even send it in to me, to my.
Okay, okay, okay.
Okay.
Alright, okay. That's what we'll do. So.
So that means David, you should send your part to Kim as well. And then you guys send the consolidating, the food that from the board to Kim, and Kim can put it together in the legal report.
From sixteen.
From sixteen.
Well, executive section.
So we're gonna send it to you, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause he's the one, he's the only one who can send out information.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Does that sound?
Yeah, I, I just want to be comfortable and like, no holes and people aren't putting it out, it's fine.
Okay.
And, and so Kim, for your information on the sixteenth, um you will have an executive session, both for personnel matter and also for facilities.
Yeah. Okay, that's our update.
Is it cool with David?
Alright, and then the other thing you guys talked about last time was the job description. Um, I want to see if there's somebody who takes the. You do the real it's. Um, I'm so good at the question, I'm actually working out. And I don't have time, I only have one more meeting, so I'm pretty busy. I, I work on A R A, that would be strong. Directors and councilors, example, library director, fees, and we have the original resource reviews. And those are all in the folder, so if you.
I would do that. I'd take that on.
And I think what, what we need is a list of. Or to know that and get it approved, and the staff can format it into the full on job description. Like that, like. You guys will love the content. That would be great.
What would the, like, what do you need to see that in?
Well, it's usually separate from assessment. Um, you know, some claiming. You need, so it's part of it.
But before the contract. With like compensation. Before the contracts. Right. Right? So.
So then.
Next meeting.
So the contract expires sometime in June. And then the May 23rd is when we make private decisions, so. Then we do that like these first, when we have the job description.
And the trustees can, the trustees can be part of that new contract.
So they should be aligned, though, with evaluations, priorities in the board that. Yeah. In some way, integrally. Okay. Maybe like a first draft and maybe it's not all that tiny.
Well, yeah, I think I mean, it's first draft, I mean, to the board, the board discusses.
Yeah, yeah. Contented, yeah. Okay.
Um, and at this, as you mentioned, we need to receive as I did with plans, so we'll be doing that.
If we need to, to the, yeah, to hear the selection.
I wonder if, um, you guys would consider inviting the trustee to designate two minutes, two meetings. And we could vote if they could certainly participate in the discussions. And that might help its transition, because some of these things are being carried over through the 15th. So I'm going to put that as a part.
And I'm sorry, April, that's not May.
April, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's patient, probably come. Some form of, yeah.
And staff can send the packet to the. And I'm talking about that here, then you have to, you know, do this on the.
David, can you hear Johnny?
I'm sorry?
You can't hear Johnny well.
Not well. I am, I am picking up the gist of it, I think, yeah.
Okay. Get into the mic, you said, Jimmy was asking Johnny.
Okay.
There's a noise, it's all tiny radio, but it's still like a.
Can I clean to it?
It's so cool looking. It's sort of the little tin with like a ping. Yeah. Aren't you teaching? No, just that, you know, the meeting's at 10 o'clock on the 5th and, uh, for the selection of the two trustees and, uh, yes, but I will pass on the, the invitation. To select. So just you got the sequence, so they would designate that the bodies would still be, um, taking action. And that would be until their meetings. So it, I mean, certainly candidates could do what they feel comfortable doing, but they might be more comfortable waiting until those meetings.
I mean, we are so obviously they're called. They'll be to the round five, or somewhere, yeah, in 14th.
Did you decide on their orientation process for giving, like space that up?
Um, David is, David is working on it.
Okay.
So Celia and I sort of did some general, these buying all, putting everything together. David was picking it up and he's, he's working on that, David, and can you give us an update on the orientation?
Uh, yeah, we'll have a basic, uh, packet ready for them to go when they start. I'm not sure we'll have it fully, fully fleshed out. I mean, the packages that we shared with the governance committee were, well, two, um. So, yeah, we're, we're building, Celia and I are building out as much of it as we can. Um, and I think, you know, the plan is, is that since most of you didn't have an orientation, that will bring part of it back, uh, to the full group. So that'll probably be, uh, in the June, uh, June timeframe. But, yeah, so there will be a packet and reading materials and that kind of stuff for all the new board members. For the two board members, not all the new board members, but.
Yeah, so I think that's.
Um, and I'm sorry, I skipped. Did anyone else have any comments on the contract at this point? I mean, I think the job description is amazing, but I had some comments, I have some. But if anyone has any others.
I didn't look carefully, but there's one in the packet earlier and then there's one in the floor report. Are they the same? Okay. Okay, I just got to the very end, that is.
Okay, so then, um, next is the trustee handbook. Um, and I think also we are able to come responsibly with finishing, let us have to do a little bit of changes. So we've got to track changes easier and try to follow what we discussed at the retreat. Open it up for discussion, I think.
Just have one comment. On page thirty-three of our packet, page three of seven of the handbook. One of the bullets was help determine and advocate for reasonable staff salaries and benefits. Um, and I wondered if that was like, one of those things, again, that's sort of like slightly below our purview in terms of director, you know, keeping things sort of director and above. Um, I think maybe advocate for, I think we haven't, we talked about this at nauseam, actually, in, in someplace around having market rate or, I can't remember what the language was that we eventually decided on, but, this one just feels worded kind of in a weirdly, like publicly specific, maybe advocate for living wage or whatever the language we decided on. Or just strike it because it's below our purview, but that was the only comment I have. But.
I, I just agree, I think it's equalistic. Yeah. We should be advocating for. Of employee, you know, support.
Right.
And wanting to create a desirable place for employees to work and to want to. Right, and that's what we did in pretty full package for employment and benefits for employees.
Yeah.
But so we take out the help determine and just sort of say advocate for, is that like a suggestion?
Yeah, like help advocate for it, an employment package that engages and I think is equitable, is equitable and engages employees, you know, or something.
I was, I was trying to go thirty-five thousand feet to just say, like, you know, to strive to make the library district a highly desirable place to work, you know, for employees or something like that, right? And so it's like all things, right? It's like the wellness programs, it's the, you know, a happy place to be, it's, you know, it's like all elements of that. It's not just the work and benefits, like, wait.
You had included in the, in the I G A, um, the library district will strive to offer salaries, pay grades and benefits generally comparable to those provided by the city and will take into account the high cost of living in Boulder County, subject to appropriation by the Board of Trustees. I think that was the language we were massaging.
Yeah.
Quite a while.
Right, I know.
Sounds totally different now, but.
But we didn't want to call out a specific, like, Google match and then.
Right, 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 right.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I don't know, to, to me, it's sort of something between what Bonita is saying and what this is saying, like, help adv- advocate for an employment package that creates, you know, the library district as a, uh, choice, what's the phrase, like we say? Avoid employer of choice or something like that, that like makes it.
Oh, employer of choice.
Yeah, something that just is like, encodes, encodes that stuff, but is a little bit less like specific about determining staff.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the way that it's worked now makes it sound like we're like going.
That's true.
Yeah.
So we're looking at them saying basically advocate for an employment package that makes.
Or a desirable place to work. Yeah, desirable place. Yeah, I kind of would that, because I don't know what an employer of choice.
Yeah. It's kind of an H R term.
Yeah.
That I, that I use, that I, but, yeah. Who's choice?
Right.
It's not good. So I just have.
So I guess, and that's why I said, I'm a little bit concerned about being completely. To sound, because that might mess down. Oh, and we can tell this. So is there some way for.
Words, say, employment package. Including salaries and benefits.
Do you want to keep the salaries language that you're saying, sorry?
Yeah, I would, I would think, and using it completely just doesn't feel like it to me, since I know that's a natural concern for staff.
We're only responsible for one employee.
But we are responsible for the budget, please, always, you know, we approve.
Right, because we've got all of that in place, right? But I mean, and that's all.
I think it's fair to leave in salaries and benefits since it's a department. I think that just, it's, I think both this bullet, as it exists now, and the bullet we are crafting to change it. We're getting the same thing, it's just the point is like, we want it to sound more policy-ish than procedural-ish.
Okay. We can try and work on some more, we just do it to. Any other comments on that?
This is, yeah, I appreciate the.
It's driving shit.
Yeah, that's a good question. We talked about it, so.
Jennifer, if you have time, I think if you guys can look at the library operations. I don't know if this reflects how you are organized now. This was the organization under the city.
Oh, yeah, it's changed.
So if.
I can rewrite it and bring up draft if you'd like.
That would be good. Yeah, because you've got this, done this before. Yeah. And then Chris, if you want to look at the whole of the library foundation, what was your thinking changes?
I reviewed it, it looks good. Thank you.
Director updates.
Hello, greetings, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, so I'm here in Columbus, Ohio with, uh, six or seven thousand other librarians, uh, which is fun and it's, it's fun to also sit here and, uh, listen to you all talk about finance and purchasing policies and things like that, which is, uh, I'm glad I'm not there tonight, but it, it does remind. You know, you all, I, you all have all been or are currently wage earners and, uh, I think you'll agree with me that, um, I don't know, like fair, fair wages are kind of as rare as a unicorn, I think, in some ways. I, I see what people do, uh, every day and it's remarkable the amount of achievement that comes and, you know, attaching a wage to it is kind of like almost, uh, like a fairy tale, so, um. And then I was reminded while you guys were talking about the, uh, the finance policy and the, you know, so that that fifty thousand dollar amount is, it was, you, you kind of got there. It's like, you know, it's precisely aligned so that you hopefully don't have to get into a discussion about, uh, snow removal contracts, but that, uh, contracts like the cleaning contract and the security contract are ones that will be on your radar, so that you will review those contracts and then that's a way of actually weighing in on things that, um, you know, you can say whether you're satisfied or not with. So I, I think the, I think the numbers and I think the policy work there is, it's quite good. Um, uh, so Columbus, Ohio, we are here with a good, uh, sizable crew. Uh, Boulder Library, as I think I mentioned, was selected to do the lodge, the lounge area. They made a lodge, I wish I had a photograph for you, it might be on Teams. I know that they were taking photographs, uh, today. It's remarkable, I can't believe what the staff did, um, to put together this, uh, lounge lodge. But, yeah, they, they clicked on the electricity at the, at the very end tonight. They, they were there for about nine and a half hours today, building the thing and a remarkable kind of, um, achievement. Uh, and then the other thing that I was thinking of is like in the, in the conversation about, which maybe is, you know, consumption, right? So we, we, we are as an organization in the government entity, you know, um, we all consume and as individuals we consume and, you know, so much, so much is tied up with consumption. So I appreciate the, the impetus for things like local and statewide and, but, you know, there, did, did anyone ever see that television show called The Good Place? It was on TV, like, I don't know, a decade or so ago. In any, there, that was when like, they were making a big deal about like, there is no ethical consumption in capitalism. And I think they used the example of like somebody's great grandfather who got into heaven because, got into the good place, uh, by purchasing his wife flowers or something like that on their fiftieth wedding anniversary. But he did it through, you know, through means that were different than what are available to us now. So the other guy went not to the good place, uh, for precisely the same thing. And that was because he had to purchase flowers through an online vendor that grew to Malaysia and there was some farm where, you know, immigrant labor was spent cutting flowers and then they had to deliver it in the truck using gasoline and all this other kind of stuff. But it is kind of interesting, right? So, you know, when we, when we make those decisions, it is extraordinarily difficult, um, to look at something like the publishing industry, which is one that we're very tied to, um, and the big five publishers that used to be the big six, that used to be ten or twelve, you know, their profit margins last year, uh, were obscene, uh, twenty years ago, profit margins in the library, in the publishing industry were like, if you were making five percent, you were doing great. Um, I think last year, Simon and Schuster, while their revenues went down, uh, their profit margins, I think, approached twenty-five percent, which is shocking when you think about how the publishing industry works and how we purchase books. That's not something that is, uh, heavily within your purview, but nevertheless, the way in which, uh, print and especially digital media has gone over the last two decades, it is a, it is a complicated kind of formula where we're not purchasing local. Um, and in fact, you know, we are, you know, in bed with, um, the publishing industry, which is uh, heavily geared towards making a profit now and a very, a very different kind of beast. So I, I appreciate, I applaud you for like, you know, putting into things, you know, for local, we'll definitely get a local cleaning company, we'll definitely get a local snow removal company, that kind of thing, but, you know, in the end, um, almost two million dollars, ten percent of our budget is going to the publishing industry. And they are, uh, they are at various times beating us up with things, um, which I don't really like that much, but oh, well. So, um, what did I have to report on? We did, um, we did flip our CDs, uh, we have the two new CDs, as was your instructions last time. Some complications on whether or not the amount, because I know you instructed me to roll it over, I think we're still looking into that. They did call me from Chase yesterday and left a voice message. So I believe that the profit that we made, uh, the, um, you know, the, the, the rate that we returned on the first three months is folded back into the CD for the next time around. It could be the case that it is not, in any case, it hasn't hit our balance sheet yet. So I'm assuming, uh, that they are rolling that into the new CD. Um, boy, we're hiring lots of people. Um, if you stop by the library, wear your name badge, because I'm sure that, um, a lot of the new staff are not going to know you. And I, I think, I saw an email message from our I T director, Amy Shum, about putting your photograph on, um, Teams, which is very important as for the new employees, but also for us, because like, I think by the time I get back, there's going to be like fifteen people who have, will have started work in the last two weeks. So it's, it's really kind of heady, spinning days. I love, uh, looking at the emails and seeing like, uh, all the new people that are starting, but, um, yeah, it's super exciting times. Um, there was one other thing that I wanted to mention, um, oh, but I can't remember what it was, so, it's, never mind, it's, it's later here, it's past my bedtime, um, and, uh.
It was the truck?
What's that? What's that? Oh, that's it, yes, yes, we purchased, uh, we purchased, uh, an electric vehicle, um. Got it on a really sweet deal, so, you know, we had, um. The team had crafted all kinds of things that they wanted from the. Purchasing a vehicle, um, we had at least, uh. Imagine, surmise that the board would ask. Why didn't you buy an electric vehicle? So we were very much looking for an electric vehicle rather than a gas guzzling vehicle. Assuming that if we bought a gas guzzler, you would say electric, and then we had kind of resigned, like, oh, gosh, we're not going to be able to get one. Um, but yeah, the last minute last week, um. Andres, our facilities manager, was given an offer. A really sweet deal on an electric vehicle, uh, a Ford. Uh, at about twenty thousand dollars less than what we thought it was going to cost, uh, so it doesn't come with all the features. That we anticipated, but, yeah, we purchased that vehicle and. Just waiting on the Department of Motor Vehicles for the registration and all that kind of stuff. Um, so, yeah, that's exciting, it's really cool. There are also photographs on Teams, um. It's a really sweet, big, white van that we're going to wrap in. Something, I'm sure, very cool looking.
A naming competition, there you go.
Uh, well, ultimately, yes, we will probably, naming competition, but, yeah, you know, if. If you haven't been, yeah, with us the last ten years, we take those very seriously, and so we'll do it on. We'll do it for the public, and, and we'll take whatever they say, so if it's, you know. Boulder, Boulder, trucky, truck face, then. And that's what we're going to take, um.
Oh, boy.
You, you can't, so we'll have to decide whether we want to do that or not, put it out for a public discussion. Um, are there any other questions?
I feel like I can hear you better when you're on, or when you're tending this way than if you're sitting right.
Well, I appreciate that, I really hate Zoom, I'm, I, you can't, I'm having all kinds of flashbacks to the pandemic, sitting here, I just, I'll. I'll do anything I can to avoid a Zoom meeting, um. But, yeah, well, I'm glad you can hear me, maybe I should just bring a, like, a microphone at meetings, yeah. That's my report, thank you very much.
Right, thank you. And we have a Golden Library Foundation update, who can give us the update? Isn't, isn't that one you're. And I was, wait a second, I didn't have on the back of the handbook, but it is out, so.
Okay.
You know what?
Well, and I think as you're suggesting, put it on there, so thank you.
Great, great.
Okay, well, hey, everybody, lots going on in the foundation, um, the, the gala tables are selling well, since we announced Bonnie Garmus will be. Headlining it, uh, we've sold over half the atrium, uh, so far, we have a couple of tables left at the, um. Twelve hundred fifty dollar level and plenty available at the higher levels, twenty-five hundred, five thousand and ten thousand, um. And, uh, if there's a. A question I had was, does the library district want to buy a table? So that's, that's something for all to discuss amongst. Yourselves, if you want, uh, to have yourselves and, and partners at a library district designated table. Uh, we would welcome that. Um, other stuff going on, uh, we're finalizing our audit nine ninety, and, you know, this is the document that. Kind of tells the public story, uh, and I'm excited about it, we haven't had an audit in several years, and this will be a regular routine to get into. Um, it's going to be a plain audit, and, um, you know, with, with a management note that you could expect for a. Foundation with very few staff, you know. Internal processes and controls, uh, and suggestions for that. I'm excited about what's going on at Novo, uh, with the donors that we helped bring the table, you've got the playground about to be installed, and. Um, also, there's a, a grant coming from Boulder County, we stood last year, uh, uh, working to. Uh, help implement some teen program up there, try to get the interest of the younger, uh, group in the neighborhood. Uh, into the library, um, we are recruiting new board members. Uh, and we could use recommendations, uh, but we have had some success, uh, just this week, uh, with some meetings, feeling. Positive about that right now, as we sort of look at the matrix of skills and background that we have, and the gaps we're looking to fill. Um, we're looking, uh, for a- any combination of underrepresented minority, under thirty-five years in age. Nonprofit board experience, legal or HR experience, fundraising experience, and or investment experience. And we got snowed out of our March meeting, uh, that was, that was a thing, the two days the DBSD was closed. Um, so we're, we're going to have a lot on the agenda in April, that's our annual meeting, so it's, it'll be the, uh. Uh, new appointment of officers, we have some folks kind of. Changing positions and rolling off the board. And our fundraising's ahead of schedule, uh, we were awarded a, a grant from the Elmar Foundation, so we had a handful of foundations, uh, helped with the campaign at Novo. Uh, that came in at twenty thousand, we had a modest estate gift of five thousand dollars, uh, for the George Reynolds branch, so it'll be fun to think about. Uh, how George Reynolds branch wants to use that. Uh, and our gala sponsorships have brought in forty-five thousand dollars, uh, finally, we're, uh, hiring, I'm doing several finalist interviews. Uh, this week to hire a full-time administrative assistant, uh, and our new office will be up the hall. Uh, at Boulder Reeds rather than at the end of the hall, um, as Boulder Reeds moves to Novo, we're taking one of those offices, so. These are just the deck chairs all getting, uh, moved around in order to fit, um. All those fifteen new employees and counting, uh, that David's going to get to meet when he returns from Ohio. Uh, but it's exciting, there's a palpable energy over at the library. And do wear your name tag if you come to visit, I'll, I'll second that, there's just more and more new faces to meet every day. So.
Questions? When is your April meeting date?
Uh, um, the eleventh.
Yes.
At, at five o'clock.
In our annual meeting date. Sixteen, it's the sixteen, and there we designate our two library trustee. And it could be the same. Right, maybe? So many questions.
Yes, it's, it's open, it's open, it's open.
Oh, we, we have really, really appreciated both Celia and I, welcome to stay on.
But we don't know. Okay, little report.
There's nothing new in the report, um, I did send out an email to you this afternoon, Johnny had asked for an update on his B twenty-four oh four nine. Which was the, the banning, book banning bill, and it never made it out of committee, so. I have mixed feelings about that. It ended up being seventeen pages long, and I thought it was really getting intrusive. On the libraries, so it's, for now, it's good.
So I'm going to play that because it was in June, it's before the, she looked at it, so the folks are interested in the itemization.
And that's to be re- emailed, if you want to read it.
So did it just grow in its length?
Yeah, it originally started out as a, a bill to basically say, we, libraries will not ban books. And it ended up being seventeen pages of procedures and postings and all sorts of things, so.
Did Cal weigh in on it and help shape it to be so long?
Yes. Everybody waited, that was the problem.
Anything else? All right, well, thank you all. We are adjourned. Connected.